Today's meeting. The public's meeting order. If you would please silently follow along to the present. My pleasure. Tonight, states of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. This is all the rules.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
As am I.
You're a bit fuzzy. Okay, I'm, uh, Ryan is right here. Hang on.
That's better.
Yeah, that is better, Janet.
I lean the screen back.
Oh.
Does that sound better?
Yes.
That's better, alright. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Bassinow?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here, Supervisor Dunn.
Here. Thank you. Next is approval of agenda items with any corrections, revelations, or additions. Ms. Posey, I understand there are two?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's two proposed add-ons. One is under Human Resources, item number thirteen, COVID-19 Training Policy. The second, uh, proposed add-on is under the Clerk's Department, item twenty, Request to Purchase DS450 High-Speed Tabulator. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the agenda? Very well, hearing none, your motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Madam Chair, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Posey calls the roll.
Clerk Posey, yes, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yep. That motion carries. The bills are for use tonight, as usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes, item removal, please, in the case of at this time.
Yes, Madam Chair. If there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we re, uh, that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Is due of the previous meeting minutes from October nineteenth, or before you? Are there any additions to these or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, hearing none, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from October nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Supported by Smith.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the minutes from October nineteenth. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Clerk Posey, yes, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. The consent agenda items before you, these are routine matters that frequently come for the board. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please in the control.
Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue makes a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Smith.
Supported by Ms. Smith. To approve the consent agenda. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Now we come to the public comments. If on agenda and non-agenda items, if you wish to speak to the board, please raise your hand. Remember, there is a time limit, and you need your name. Ryan, you can go ahead.
Okay, um, if anybody wishes to speak, um, you can go ahead and press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, or if you're using the Zoom app, you can just click the raise hand button, and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing anybody, Janet.
None?
Nope.
Still nothing?
Nothing, yeah, no, no, no one's raising their hand.
Okay, then we will move on to new business. The Engineering Department wants to schedule a public hearing for street lighting special assessment. The resolution for Villas of Bellagio condominiums. Mrs. Van Tiflin, you're only asking for a date, correct?
That is correct, November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, very good. And all the lots are still owned by the developer?
Yes, they are, this is a typical developer requested, uh, special assessment district for street lighting.
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue, I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for street lighting SAD resol, uh, resolution for Villas of Bellagio condominiums for November the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Nevers.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve the November twenty-fourth date for the public hearing. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes, thank you, that motion carries. Next is the same thing, uh, special assessment district for Brookridge Estates Site condominiums. Mrs. Van Tiflin? Same date?
Same date, November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Mrs. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue, I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the street lighting SAD resolution for Brookridge Estates Site condominiums for November the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Nevers.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve November twenty-fourth. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next is a request to approve change order number one for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, Board members, uh, this is change order number one for this project. Um, we ran into a few things during construction, and you had to make some adjustments. Um, and the change order reflects the, uh, the additional, uh, costs, uh, as well as we need an extension of time, uh, because of the delay that we had in awarding the project due to COVID. Um, this particular change order is an increase, uh, in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this change order?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith, I'll make the motion to request to approve change order number one for the twenty-twenty pathway closure program in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Seconded by Clerk Posey.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve change order number one as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Uh, request to approve K-estimate number three for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, Board members, this is K-estimate number three for the two thousand twenty pathway gap closure program, uh, which is, uh, uh, just about, uh, complete for this year. Uh, this is in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents, and we are recommending approval.
Any questions from Mrs. Van Tiflin? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith, I will make the motion to request to approve the K-estimate number three for the twenty-twenty path gateway closure program in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-eight six, and sixty-five cents.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Clerk Posey.
Seconded by Clerk Posey to approve K-estimate number three as requested. Posey, would you call the roll?
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Under Human Resources, we are looking for authorization to extend offers of employment in the fire department, Mr. Sardick.
Madam Chair and members of the board, as this board is well aware, uh, the township is consistently recruiting for the positions of auxiliary recruit and paid-on-call firefighters. Um, once we received twenty-five applications for those positions, uh, the applicants were, were, um, invited to take a written test on the September sixteenth, seventeenth, and twenty-second. There, there were, uh, the candid, the candidates that passed the written test were moved on to an agility touch, uh, test which was held on October fifth. Um, three, the three individuals that are, um, applying for the auxiliary position that passed the agility, uh, test were interviewed by the selection committee on October nineteenth, and the selection committee of Supervisor Dunn, Treasurer Goodhue, Chief Phillips, and Deputy Chief Monroe are recommend, recommending those three, um, auxiliary, uh, those three candidates for auxiliary firefighter, um, Ethan Batters Thatcher, Ryan Oak, and Scott Petrovich. Uh, so with that, I'm asking for a motion to approve those three individuals for hire contingent upon successful completion of post offer requirement.
See, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers, I will make the motion to, and please forgive me if I mispronounce the names. Ethan Batters Thatcher, Ryan Oaky, and Scott Petrovich for hire contingent upon successful completion of a post offer, pre-hire physical examination, drug and alcohol screening, background check, and psychological examination. The effective date of hire will be on or after November twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to extend the offers of employment as indicated. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. This is, um, authorization to initiate the recruitment process for utility workers, Mr. Sardick.
Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, Mr. Wanglin, the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Department, has requested the Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for two utility workers. These are not new positions, these are positions that have been, um, vacant for a short time within his department, um, but at this time, he, he finds it necessary to fill those two positions. Um, these positions, uh, fall under the collective bargaining agreement with, uh, MAP, and would be posted in accordance with those provisions. Um, but with that, we ask for authorization for the Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for two utility worker positions under, uh, the M A P E, M T P E A contract.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Sardick?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith, I will make that motion authorized to initiate the recruitment process of utility workers.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Clerk Posey.
I think that's good, yeah, this is first. Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to initiate the recruitment process of utility workers. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next is the add-on, and this is the COVID-19 training policy, Mr. Sardick.
Madam Chair and members of the board, um, I, I want to thank you for the opportunity to add this, um, to the agenda, but I think everyone will understand, uh, the timing of it. Um, I, as I'm sure the whole board knows, the, you know, we were operating under Governor Whitmer's executive orders for most of the summer and into the beginning, into the beginning of this month. Um, the Supreme Court on October second, um, basically ruled that she didn't have the she didn't have the authority to, uh, proceed with those emergency powers after April thirtieth. Um, in response to that Supreme Court ruling, um, on October sixth and ninth, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Resources over, under the governor issued new rules. In addition, on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty, the Michigan Occupational Safety and, and Health Administration, otherwise known as MIOSHA, issued emergency rules through the governor's office, uh, regarding COVID-19. Uh, those rules require the township to have a policy relative to COVID-19 training procedures. We've gone over these procedures with the Safety Committee, and feel that they are appropriate, and with that, I'd ask for, um, a motion to approve the, the proposed COVID-19 training policy, and given the nature of this, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions, anyone hands.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Smith?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Nevers, I will make the motion to approve the attached proposed COVID-19 training policy.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to adopt the COVID-19 training policy. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
That motion carries. The fire department is requesting a promotion of probationary fire depart, uh, firefighters in the fire department. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to promote probationary firefighter Ryan Randlett to the position of, uh, paid-on-call firefighter. Probationary firefighter Randlett has successfully completed his probationary period, and is recommended for promotion by the probationary development committee and myself, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the two?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith, I will make the motion to request to promote probationary firefighter Ryan Randlett to the position of paid-on-call firefighter.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
And I will support by Trustee Nevers. Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to promote the probationary fire as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next is request to purchase three Lucas chest compression systems. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase, uh, three Lucas three chest compression systems and the four-year preventative maintenance agreements. Uh, the Lucas device delivers consistent high-quality, uh, chest compressions, thus increasing the chance of survival for patients that have suffered a cardiac arrest. One device was purchased in October of two thousand nineteen, and is currently housed at Station One in response to cardiac-related calls throughout the township. The goal when the first device was purchased was to apply for a grant for the three additional devices, so each station would have one. As of now, that grant opportunity has not become available, so therefore, we've not been able to apply for the grant. Uh, the purchase of three additional devices was planned for included in this current budget. The same day I received the quote for, uh, the three additional devices, I was made aware the purchase, uh, may be covered under the current COVID funds, uh, that the township has received, uh, through the county. I contacted the finance director, provided her with the materials, uh, she contacted the county and received approval to purchase the three devices with the COVID funds. Therefore, the, uh, purchase price will not have to come out of, uh, the current fire department equipment budget. As it states, the device can only be purchased directly from the manufacturer, and therefore bids could not be received, uh, on mitten. I included the single-source, uh, manufacturer letter, along with the confirmation of process letter from the purchasing agent. So with that, I would recommend purchasing three additional Lucas three chest compression devices, and the four-year preventative maintenance agreements from Stryker at a total cost of sixty-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Chief Phillips?
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue, I will make a motion for the approval of the purchase of three Lucas three chest compression systems from Stryker in the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
And support by Trustee Nevers?
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to purchase the compression systems requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey? Yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next is a request to purchase
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase two thousand five hundred feet of two-and-a-quarter-inch fire hose. Uh, the hose will be carried on, uh, each of the four fire engines and the ladder truck that will be used for, uh, fire suppression purposes and training. Uh, the hose that I'm recommending is lighter than the current two-and-a-half-inch hose that we utilize, will be easier for the interior crews to maneuver around the corners and stairways. The purchasing specialist placed a request for quotes on mitten on September eleventh, with the due date of September twenty-fifth. A total of five bids were, uh, were received, the lowest quote that was received did not quote the hose that was specified, and so therefore, the quote was rejected. Uh, the lowest quote that met the specifications was submitted by Apollo Fire Equipment, the purchase of hose was included in the current budget, and the confirmation of process letter was included. And with that, it's, uh, my recommendation to purchase the fire hose from Apollo Fire Equipment at a total cost of eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions with, with Phillips?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith, I will make that motion to request to purchase the fire hoses at the amount eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to purchase the fire hose as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. And this is a good one for last, just request to purchase one twenty-twenty-one K-EME Super Duty Mini Pumper. Please go ahead.
Uh, Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm, uh, requesting, uh, your approval, uh, this evening to purchase a twenty-twenty-one, uh, KME Super Duty Mini Pumper. Uh, the apparatus will replace our twenty-twelve KME Ford F-five-fifty Mini Pumper that is housed at Station Three. The apparatus will respond to medical calls, uh, vehicle accidents, and fires. It will be a licensed DMS non-transport vehicle, will carry the jaws of life, all required medical, medical equipment, and fire-related equipment. Uh, the apparatus that I'm recommending for purchase is similar to the, uh, mini pumppers that were previously, previously purchased and are currently in service. The cab and chassis is a twenty-twenty-one Ford F-five-fifty, has a four-door cab that will seat four firefighters, and it's four-wheel drive. We currently have, uh, five of the Ford, uh, F-five-fifties in service, four are mini pumppers, and the fifth is the air supply and rapid intervention truck. Uh, the Ford F-five-fifties have held up well, and is currently the only option we have available, as Ford is the only manufacturer that meets, uh, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Apparatus Rollover Standard. The apparatus will be outfitted with a fire pump capable of providing twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water per minute, and will carry two-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water. Uh, the apparatus that I'm proposing to place, uh, replace with the new one, uh, is the twenty-twelve Ford F-five-fifty, uh, four-wheel-drive Mini Pumper with a fire pump capable of, uh, providing twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute. The current apparatus was placed in service in December of two thousand eleven. If approved, uh, the new, uh, unit would not be completed and delivered until, uh, December two thousand twenty-one or January two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the apparatus has served us, uh, well, but it's in need of being replaced. The original replacement schedule, uh, anticipated replacing the mini pumppers after seven years, uh, however, they have since been, uh, adjusted to a replacement life of ten years. Uh, the mini pumppers have allowed the life of the main fire engines to be increased from fifteen years, uh, to twenty years. The main engines only respond to fires and major incidents. Uh, the main wear and tear is placed on the mini pumppers, uh, they're much lighter and they're easier to maneuver in the subdivisions, uh, that we have. Over the past several months, uh, specifications for the apparatus were developed, and eighty-one-page RFP was placed on mitten on September eighteenth. page RFP was placed on mitten on September eighteenth. Bids were due October seventh at, uh, ten a.m. Bid opening was held at Town Hall immediately following the ten a.m. deadline. One bid was received. Uh, the bid was submitted by KME Fire Apparatus in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. The required bid bond of ten percent was submitted with the bid as required. Uh, a total of one exception to the specifications was submitted, and that was, uh, to the lifetime warranty on the frame rails of the chassis. The specifications called for a lifetime warranty on the frame rails, however, Ford limits, uh, the warranty to thirty-six months. Um, there's no accept, uh, no objection to that exception. Uh, the entire bid process was handled by the purchasing specialist and I included, uh, the confirmation of process letter stating that, uh, it meets all of the township policies. Uh, if approved, a pre-construction conference, uh, will be held at the factory to review and confirm the specifications at the conclusion of that meeting and upon final signature of the build, print, uh, KME will provide to the township the performance bond and the total amount of the apparatus, uh, is required in the specs. Uh, in addition to the pre-construction conference, a mid-inspection and a final, uh, inspection will be conducted prior to the apparatus, uh, being delivered. Uh, per the bid documents, delivery will be no greater than, uh, three hundred and twenty days after receipted a signed contract. The replacement, uh, of the apparatus, uh, will be included in the proposed 2021, 2022 fire improvement budget. There'll be no funds expended until the apparatus has been delivered to the township and final acceptance has taken place. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, Treasurer Oliver. Uh, Chief, I got a quick question for you. Uh, maybe I missed it, but, uh, wh- what are we gonna do with our old, our old mini pumper?
Uh, once the new one is-
The 2012.
Uh, once the new one's received, I would come back to the board, uh, and request approval to, um, sell it, uh, per the township policies.
Okay. Generally, where, where's the market for that, uh, used apparatus like that? Is it in the state or, or is it local?
Uh, the others that, uh, previous apparatus we've sold have either went, uh, out of state or, uh, to Mexico.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, if there is no other questions, uh, I would move that we purchase the 2021 KME Super Duty Mini Pumper at the price of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-three.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support by- Support by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to purchase the KME Super Duty Mini Pumper as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Yes.
Trustee Busenow.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. The Finance Department has some purchasing policy update for us.
This is Janet Solomon, and I will be presenting today on behalf of the Finance Department.
Well, right ahead.
It's, thank you. In its continuing commitment to promote effective, professional, and consistent procurement of goods and services from a home township, the Finance Department is proposing updates to the December fourth, two thousand nineteen purchasing policy. The updates to the purchasing policy include modifications to the Quick Reference Chart for added clarity, a simplified purchase initiation form, clarification on competitive bidding of specialized services, clarification on procurement from board-approved contracted consultants, and documentation of the process for virtual bids and virtual bid opening. Today, I am requesting a motion to approve the purchasing policy as revised, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Trustee Busenow. Um, Ms. Solomon, I just wanna thank you. I, uh, um, have supported you one hundred percent since you came on. You're doing a great job for this township and you'll do great things after. I'm not, uh, I can't see sitting at the board anymore, but at least sitting on my phone right now. It, I, I assume, and I, I don't wanna assume, 'cause I know a teacher in the state of technology. Do you have the, you have this in front of you right now? I can ask you a question about one piece of it? Do you have-
I, I do.
What you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking at Chapter Seven, and I, and I hope, and again, I don't wanna put my fellow board members on the spot, um, sometimes I don't have everything in front of me, but I'm looking at Chapter Seven, Disposal of Property, okay? I'm looking at, are you there?
I am here, yes.
There in the document? No, like in the document. I just wanna read it to you what I see, the change.
Yes, I'm here.
And I just have a concern about the change. So, if you look at section A, Authority to Dispose of Surplus Property, the old, the red is the change, right? Correct?
Correct.
I'm reading it right, there, okay? So, it said, "Property with a value in excess of a thousand dollars may be sold after approval of the sale has been given by the board." Now, the addition is, "Or Designee." So, I'm wondering, I, I kinda think I, I might know what that means. I think we've dealt more with, um, discussion among the board as far as when we purchase property than sold it, but I'm thinking maybe like what the, the chief just talked about and Charlie asked about, or Trustee Oliver asked about, and, you know, what was he gonna do when we sold it? But, it says, "The approval of the sale has been given by the board," and now it says, "Or Designee." I would like language to say, for future boards, "Given by the board and then executed by the designee." Why would, I mean, let's say we have, let's just say we have a million-dollar piece of property, right? So, the designee can approve that sale? 'Cause it doesn't say, "Given by the board and then given to the designee to execute." It says, "Given by the board or it's designee." Do, do you see what I'm saying on that? Should, do you like that line in there? I mean, the designee would have the right to approve any sale over a thousand dollars? Would he have to come back to the board and ask for that? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Well, I, I guess, yeah, you're, you're look, uh, you're asking me, correct? Um-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You had, I, I would be coming to the board an awful lot, or the designee would be coming to the board an awful lot. Typically, um, we would have those discussions offline. For example, old, I, I've been selling a lot of older vehicles, which are above the one-thousand-dollar mark. Um, and so that just basically would give the approval of whomever is requesting those vehicles be sold, that, that I, I do that without board approval, but based on the, the direction from the designee.
Ms. Solomon, and-
And I see the spirit of that one hundred percent. And, and I, and I'm reading that and interpreting that like in my head, but when I read that, it says the approval could given by the, you know, could we have a million-dollar piece of property in the designee? Like, who is the designee? How, what's the official process for that? And we, we did have a situation before where we had a, you know, we had a trustee that acted like he was a dozen, designee for some property in the township. Um, how, how do we determine that? Like, I know there was bits and pieces, like what we're updating. Is there an official process where it says when we sell, how we determine who the designee is?
Mr. Busenow.
There is not.
Mr. Busenow. This is Janet.
Yes.
Today, in a, an interior department meeting with, um, with Mr. Vane Piflin and, uh, Mr. Box, myself, and Mr. Naples, we discussed this very thing. And, um, we, one of us, probably me, will meet with Ms. Solomon either the end of this week or the first of next term, determine how we're going to sell these pieces of property. So, they're all ready. We've had the, um, professor look at them, give us a baseline price. It will probably lead through the bidding process, but that's something we have to discuss with Ms. Solomon so that we can comply with the purchasing policy. That answer to your question?
I didn't hear your last few words. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear your last few words.
Well, it was just that, um, we're going to meet with Ms. Solomon and decide how we're going to go about the, put them up for sale either by bid, I'm sure it will be by bid, but we need to comply with the purchasing policy. So, we will be meeting with her.
Right, they, they, I mean, when I was with the chief and the-
And that is typically how it's been done. I'm sorry, that is, the, the process, I guess, I have not seen documented in terms of the sale of assets or surplus property, but typically, um, the larger the value of the item to be sold, the more people are involved with that, um, in terms of department heads.
Yeah, when you go down to Section B, Janet, it, it says, once it, when it says, "Methods for Disposal of Surplus Property," the, the language down there is more what I would like to see language added up to the top. When it says, "Once authority is granted, department heads in cooperation with the board shall dispose of surplus property." I was just wondering why we couldn't put language that said that property with a value in excess of one thou, uh, in excess of one thousand may be sold after approval of the sale has been given to the board or the designee with the cooperation of the board or under the direction of the board. To me, the way that reads, it just gives the designee a lot of leeway to approve the sale of that property however they want to. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just reading that legally, I mean, could a designee change the parameters of what the board said based on what the, what we're changing that terminology to? Did the board say, "Listen, I wanna sell that property for thirty thousand," and the designee says, "Hey, I sold it for twenty-seven thousand and I approved it 'cause it said I could." Am I making that clear what I'm trying to ask, sir?
Yeah, well, it-
I mean, if I'm the only one seeing that issue, I guess, I'm just, it, it is, out of everything you presented, that's the only line that just stood out to me. I, I don't have a problem with this in general, it's just, I just think that gives a designee a lot of leeway to approve whatever they wanna do with that sale outside of the board.
Mister Busenow? This is Stacy Smith. I, I'm on as well, so, I, I didn't totally understand what you're saying.
Does it make sense what I'm asking, Stacy?
Yeah, yeah, I do, 'cause I was around during the property sales, and I think that's kinda what you're focusing on. Um, this would be a board decision, but if we took out the words "or designee" in both of those, um, sentences, but we changed the dollar amount to maybe twenty, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, or, or something that the board is more comfortable with, because I think the intent was for, um, as Ms. Solomon said, like the vehicle sales, or something smaller, not the large property sales or something more substantial. Um, so maybe we could take out the words "or designee," but we could change that thousand-dollar threshold to something higher.
And maybe even higher than some five, maybe fifty.
Right, right.
Yeah, maybe something just, yeah. And I, to me, that makes sense too, so.
So, we obviously, we can do whatever the board wishes.
And I don't wanna hold all this up because of that, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about that, and I think, I'm glad that you understand Stacy too, and I'm getting at with that terminology, so.
Madam Chair.
And I don't think we need to hold it up. Oh, go ahead, mister.
No, I, I just got a quick question. Uh, and Tim, I gotta get where you, where you're coming from a little bit with this. Um, could we just exclude, this, this kinda surrounds real estate really did. When, when you start talking million dollars, couple hundred thousands, generally, the stuff we're selling is ten, fifteen thousand at the most, uh, a truck, a backhoe, maybe it's twenty-five thousand. But I think, where, where you're talking, Tim, when something gets in excess of like maybe a hundred thousand, and, and that generally is real estate. Maybe we need to, to look at, to just circle around the real estate issue.
And I agree with you, Charlie, and, and that's what Stacy suggested, and, and that's, without saying real estate, that's just what I'm thinking of, what, so-
Well, that-
The dollar amount adjustment could be the way to go. So.
That's my comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Or, or maybe we approve it, you know, I, I'm gonna vote yes on this one hundred percent, but maybe we approve it and, and just maybe going forward, come back to a future board, which I won't be on, to maybe make that adjustment, so.
Either that, or we can, um, postpone it until the next meeting. Two options.
I would propose that we change the thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand and remove the words "or designee" in both of those spots on the, on that line item.
Okay. Does anybody have any more questions? Comment?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say to Janet Solomon, um, I appreciate you getting on, uh, these adjustments to the policy as quickly as you did. There was a couple loopholes that we came across in the last couple months and with the, um, electronic bid opening, so I just wanna thank you for your prompt attention at updating the policy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is- And I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, purchasing policy, amending Chapter Seven, Line Item A2, uh, to twenty-five thousand versus one thousand, and removing the word "designee" in both, uh, sections or sentences in Section A2.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Treasurer Goodhue. Treasurer Goodhue supports.
Sorry. Motion by Ms. Goodhue. Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Goodhue, to approve the updated purchasing policy with the Janus, recommend it, excuse me. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Clerk Posey. Yes, Treasurer Goodhue.
Yes.
Trustee Busenow.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. We will move on to Information Technology Department, and this is requesting approval to purchase new copy machines, new platters, and cloud faxing from Applied Imaging. Ms. Solomon, are you in the conference?
I think I, uh, IT is going to present this agenda item.
Mr. Ivanowski, are you going to present this?
That is correct, I'm, I'm here. So, um, tonight, Madam Supervisor, members of the board, tonight I'm seeking approval to purchase ten copy machines, two platters, and cloud faxing for applied imaging for a total amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, these machines are all-in-one, they have the capability to print, scan, copy, and fax, and they're intended to replace the current fleet of copy machines that were purchased at or around 2011. Their useful life is between six to seven years, and they're pushing nine now. So, the cost of the maintenance fees and the downtime, um, Janet Solomon, Stacy Smith, and myself got together and we, um, had interviewed three separate companies. Applied Imaging was the cheapest, and we're suggesting approval to give them the bid in an amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred, nine dollars and twenty-five cents. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ivanowski? Any more questions?
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the ten copy machines, two platters- I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the ten copy machines, two platters, and cloud faxing from Applied Imaging for a total amount of ninety five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and twenty five cents.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Seconded by clerk Posey.
The head is by Ms. Posey, to approve the purchase. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, treasurer Goodhue.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Buzzino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries. On the add-on from the clerk's department, and it would authorize the clerk to purchase a high-speed ballot tabulator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Um, I thank you for approving this add-on this evening. Um, back in August, I applied for a grant, Help America Vote Act, CARES Act grant, uh, in an effort to obtain an additional high-speed tabulator, uh, DS four fifty, anticipating the increased amount of absentee mail-in ballots. Um, I applied for the grant, but uncertain as to whether or not we would actually be able to acquire the machine in time for this November general election because of the increased high demand for these types of high-speed tabulators. We found out last week that, um, we will be able to obtain the high-speed tabulator for this election if approved by the board this evening. The grant, um, will supply fifty percent, um, will cover fifty percent of the cost of the tabulator. The tabulator is thirty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty one dollars, of which Macomb Township would be responsible for seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty three. The cost of the tabulator in the grant agreement was thirty six thousand, four hundred and sixteen, however, we were only able to obtain a refurbished, uh, machine, but it reduced our cost to thirty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty one. The item is budgeted for in the clerk's election equipment capital improvement plan, and I will, uh, I'm available to answer any questions. We are in desperate need of this machine for this election, and we are very excited to obtain it.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Posey?
Yes. Clerk Posey, where- where are you getting the machine from that you're gonna be able to get it by election day?
Uh, ESNS is the, uh, company, the vendor that Macomb County has selected to, uh, to supply all our equipment for Macomb County.
Where- where are they located?
ESNS, Grand Rapids, I believe.
Yeah.
With, yeah, we have a local, uh, representative here, but I believe they're out of Grand Rapids.
Okay, just wondering how you were gonna get it so quickly, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. Questions, comments, or motions?
Madam Chair, this is trustee Smith. I'll make the motion to authorize the clerk to purchase the DS four fifty high-speed ballot tabulator from the Election Systems and Software in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty three dollars.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to authorize Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Buzzino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Tre- treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now we'll move on to board minutes. We'll start with the, um, trustees, um, Ms. Nevers.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, I have no comments this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things, uh, the planning commission, the Cultivate Macomb, we've held, uh, three, now we've held three virtual open house, uh, meetings. Uh, I would say they're very successful. Uh, one was on roads, and, uh, our Jim Van Tiplin, uh, was a panelist, which was very good, uh, very informative. Uh, the second one was, um, uh, Park and Rett, where our cell, DeCaro, was a panelist, which was good. Uh, and, um, the third one was last night on, uh, land use, and, uh, Dave Scudo, that, uh, helps Josh in the, um, uh, planning department, uh, he was also a panelist, along with, uh, another gentleman, and it was very informative also. And, uh, some good questions got, uh, emailed in and, uh, virtually asked, and, uh, so that was good. So we're make- we are making progress with the master plan. Um, that is one thing I got to say. The other thing, uh, last, on the last board meeting, we talked about the, uh, when we opted out of the PA one fifty-two, uh, there was a- there was a question that was raised about, is any other communities have opted out? And it sounded like, uh, no other communities opted out, but I did do a little homework here, and there are four other communities right around us that have opted out, so I just wanna bring that to the board's attention, that, uh, we were not the only one that opted out on this. New Baltimore has, Washington Township has, and Rochester has, and, uh, we could even go farther, and Commerce Township in Birmingham, and Mount Morris also opted out of PA one fifty-two. So, uh, we're not the only ones here that have done that, uh, I- I think there's, uh, a lot coming up in that, and I think we're gonna make, uh, real good progress with the new board, uh, going into that, uh, agreement, so that is all my comments. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buzzino?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, just to piggyback on what, uh, trustee Oliver said. Trustee Oliver, I'm glad that you consider, uh, Mount Morris a surrounding community, because my, um, my mother lives up in Mount Morris Township, so, um, the closer she can feel that she is to me, the- the better, so I- I thank for pointing that out. Um, the only comment I really have tonight, uh, Madam Supervisor, is, um, I just want anybody who is doing anything they can, from our clerk's office, to the volunteers, to the employees, who are, um, based on an email, giving up their lunch room to ensure that, um, people can come in and vote, and feel safe and secure to vote, because I do think this is a community where everybody should feel that they're safe and secure to vote. I just wanna thank you. Um, as a public school teacher, there's not been a day in my work since April that's been normal. Um, to say the least, things are- are changing day to day, and I know elections are, I'm hearing many people are coming in to- to town hall to vote. Um, I like to see that. Um, we, nobody knows how this election is gonna turn out, but, uh, residents are just, you know, I'm confident that, uh, we're doing everything we can, based on what I've heard, not there on a day-to-day basis, I can't be, cause I'm working as a public school teacher, um, but everything I know that you should feel safe to come out, and- and elec- if we don't have elections, we don't have anything in our democracy, so, um, I'm glad to see that, uh, that's happening, and again, thanks to the employees who are- who are giving up their lunch area so people can come in and vote. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have nothing for- well, I do have one thing to say. Um, last Saturday, I was able to attend the, um, the Bible Drive again, that firefighter Warren does with the, um, Neighbor Unite, and again, it was another huge success, and I'm so glad that they continue to do this, it's a great cause, and I really appreciate their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurers, comment?
Yes, um, the treasures department is preparing the winter tax bill, uh, due out by December the first. Uh, the delinquent trash has already been transferred to us, so it- it, uh, it's too late to make a payment on your delinquent trash, that will be on your tax bill. Uh, the water, uh, delinquent water payments are going to be accepted until Friday, till, uh, four o'clock, and after that, those will be transferred to taxes, um, as well. So, um, I know that, uh, the tax bill is getting, uh, prepared as we speak, and it will be out December the first. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerks, comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as has been mentioned already this evening, there is a lot of voting going on. Uh, we have been inundated in town hall, uh, we could not expect or anticipate the turnout that we've had for in-person voting. Um, I just wanna thank everybody in the building that's been cooperating with us to assist, uh, voters to getting to the clerk's department. Um, as has been men- mentioned, we've had to take over the break room, we've had to take over conference rooms, so everybody has worked with us to accomplish, uh, this elec- election. But especially the grounds and facilities department and parks and rec, they've, um, given up their rooms, they've given up their time, and they have been on standby, uh, for us in the last two weeks, and for that, we are extremely grateful. For all the voters that, um, have been contacting the clerk- clerk's office, the number one question is, can I early vote at the clerk's office? In Michigan, it's called vote in person. You can vote in person in the clerk's office. We are here tomorrow until seven, from nine AM to seven PM, Friday, nine to five, Saturday, eight to four, and on Monday, you can obtain an absentee ballot and vote in person until ten AM. Uh, we are here to assist you. Uh, another question is, are the lines long? We do get a line, however, we are amply staffed so that we are able to rotate the- the line very quickly and service all the voters. So, the line here is not taking more than five minutes, and, um, we're assisting everybody and- and getting them out as soon as possible. Um, for a total, just to get an idea of, uh, where we're at right now, we have issued thirty one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen absentee ballots, and we've re- received back twenty four thousand, eight hundred and thirty for a seventy-eight percent turnaround. So, uh, as I mentioned, there's a lot of people getting out and voting, which is, uh, for a clerk, very exciting to see. We've never seen anything like this, uh, but we are here to assist you if you have any questions, concerns, there's been concerns about safety of the ballot. We're happy to answer all your questions. Please utilize at this time the drive-up ballot drop boxes located throughout the township, or bring it directly to the clerk's office, uh, to avoid any delay with your ballot. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question. I, um, have to, uh, reiterate what the clerk's office, Ms. Posey has just said, they have been super busy with this election. I have never seen such a heavy turnout for an election in my thirty-sixth year. It is a wonderful feeling to see people lined up to vote. Thank you to the clerk, the staff, the chair, the department, who's been helped out, and who's been, for all of the effort that has gone into this election. It's certainly going to be a record holder. And I mentioned this, uh, at the last meeting, but I'm gonna do it again, because Halloween is just days away. We're still getting calls from the residents, so I would like to, um, go over again what I did, um, last meeting. Halloween is not being celebrated on Friday night, October thirtieth. Halloween is October thirty-one, on Saturday. As far as setting off the fire sirens, the whole township does not set off sirens for the beginning and ending time for clerical treating. That is Shelby Township sirens we are hearing. The township does not set time for clerical treating, but is in support of each individual individual family setting their own strings for the parents' voting. Please be sure to monitor the safety of your child's classroom, the security tags, the goodies inside, and the rest, respectful of your neighborhood properties. Happy Halloween to everyone. Just as a reminder that the office will be closed Monday and Tuesday to accommodate the election. The, um, employees are asked to work from home by day, just so that the clerk's office can have all of the windows they need. The way they're, um, taking over areas right now, it's really exciting to go, to have, uh, all kinds of voting booths set up. Well, if you haven't voted yet and you want to, you can still come in to the office and do that, or you can go to your individual polls. Other than that, good luck to the candidates. Um, assuming every one of them deserves your respect and your good wishes, so from myself, and I'm sure that you have, good luck to everyone. That is all I have. Ms. Posey, the business for this evening, if there are more things to adjourn.
Madam Chair, clerk Posey makes a motion to adjourn.
Support by Smith?
Seconded by Ms. Smith to adjourn.
Sorry. Yes, Madam Chair, clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Buzzino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That concludes the business for this evening, and we are adjourned.